All right, message number four. Our special meetings this week, what is your motive? This evening, we're going to be discussing the motive of pride. And we're going to be looking at two different people. We've got Balaam, and we have the old prophet with the young prophet. In the Old Testament, we'll be looking at both of those as examples of the motive of pride this evening. So let's pray, and then I'll get us into the message. Heavenly Father, Lord, lead us to higher ground. Lord, that ought to be our desire every day of this mortal life. Lord, is to get just that much closer to you, to get that much closer to being everything that we have the potential of being while still stuck with these mortal bodies, Lord, that we can be in the Spirit. Lord, that's what we need to do. We need to walk in the Spirit, not walk in the flesh. That should be our desire, that should be our goal, it should be our determination. And a great part of that is our motives in what we do. So, Lord, again, I pray, please help me. Lord, help me to keep my mind focused, my mind sharp. Help me to pay attention, Lord, to your guides and your prompts, Lord, and to share the message as you gave it to me for this evening. Lord, I pray, all that's said and done, Lord, please, dear God, I pray, let you be glorified in it all. Otherwise, there's no point. And we pray and ask for it in Christ's name. Amen. So tonight, we've got two biblical examples that the Lord's given me of believers, okay? Believers whose self-pride is what motivated their behaviors even though both of them were men of God, called by God to serve and represent Him. And Balaam is a prophet of the Most High God in a place called Pethor, which was located on the upper Euphrates River near Haran, if you remember Abraham. So it was in what would today be modern-day eastern Syria. King Balak of Moab, who was closely allied to the Midianites, or to the south of him, reaches out to Balaam through the elders of both of these peoples to come and to curse the nation of Israel for him. We're going to be going to Numbers, chapter 22, Book of Numbers, chapter 22, and we're going to read the first seven verses here. Numbers 22, beginning at verse, "One of the children of Israel set forward and pitched in the plains of Moab on this side Jordan by Jericho," so they're on the eastern bank of the Jordan River. "And Balak, the son of Zippor, saw all that Israel had done to the Amorites; and Moab was sore afraid of the people, because they were many. And Moab was distressed because of the children of Israel. And Moab said unto the elders of Midian, Now shall this company lick up all that around about us, as the ox licketh up the grass of the field. And Balak, the son of Zippor, was king of the Moabites at that time. And he sent messengers before to Balaam, the son of Beor, to Pethor, which is by the river of the land of the children of his people, to call him, saying, Behold, there is a people come out of, from Egypt! Behold, they cover the face of the earth, and they abide over against me. Come now, therefore, I pray thee, curse me this people, for they are too mighty for me. Peradventure, I shall prevail, that we may smite them, and that I may drive them out of the land; for I walk that he whom thou blestest is blessed, and he whom thou cursedes is cursed. And the elders of Moab and the elders of Midian departed with the rewards of divination in their hand; and they came to Balaam and spake unto him the words of Balak." Now, it's not going to serve our purpose for this message to go into the entirety of this story. I'm sure most of you are familiar enough with the story, that that's not going to be necessary. What we need to establish here this evening is Balaam's motive for what he would do. So again, pick it up at verse 10 there, Numbers 22, and we're going to read from verse 10 down to 22. So Numbers, chapter 22, beginning at verse 10. "And Balaam said unto God, Balak, the son of Zippor, king of Moab, has sent unto me, saying, Behold, there is a people come out of Egypt, which covered the face of the earth. Come now, curse me them; peradventure, I shall be able to overcome them and drive them out. And God said unto Balaam, Thou shalt not go with them; thou shalt not curse the people, for they are blessed. And Balaam rose up in the morning, and said unto the princes of Balak, Get you into your own land; for the Lord refused it, to give me leave to go with you. And the princes of Moab rose up, and went unto Balak, and said, Balaam refuses to come with us. And Balak sent yet again princes, more and more honorable than they. And they came to Balaam, and said unto him, Thus saith Balak, the son of Zippor, Let nothing, I pray thee, hinder thee from coming unto me; for I will promote thee unto very great honor, and I will do whatsoever thou sayest unto me. Come, therefore, I pray thee, curse me this people. And Balaam answered, and said unto the servants of Balak, If Balak would give me his house full of silver and gold, I cannot go beyond the word of the Lord, my God, to do less or more. Now, therefore, I pray you, carry also here this night, that I may know what the Lord will say unto me more. And God came unto Balaam that night, and said unto him, Oth men, Come to me, come to call thee, rise up and go with them. But yet the word which I shall say unto thee, that shalt thou do. And Balaam rose up in the morning, and saddled his ass, and went with the princes of Moab; and God's anger was kindled, because he went. And the angel of the Lord stood in the way, for an adversary against him. Now he was riding upon his ass, and his two servants were with him." We'll stop there. The Lord had already commanded Balaam not to go, and he had told him why he was not to go. Balak sends a second envoy, this time promising great rewards and honor, even more than he had offered at the first. Now, there was no need for Balaam to go to the Lord about it. Nothing had changed so that the Lord would change his answer. Nothing had changed at all. The only thing that changed was that Balak offered more goodies, more enrichment to Balaam personally if he would come and do as Balak was asking him to do. It was still against God's revealed will for him to go. So the Lord tries Balaam. He's like, really, you're coming to me again? What's changed? Nothing's changed, except the fact that you can get more goodies, you know? And so he says, well, if the men call thee, rise up and go. Now, Balaam, if he'd been thinking and been in his right mind, he would have said, well, hold on, you already commanded me, Lord, not to go. So what is the purpose that you would have me go now if I'm forbidden to curse these people? You already told me, Lord, don't go. You already told me not to curse these people, because you've blessed them. Now, that would have been if he'd have had a discriminating mind, okay? But that is not how he responds, and that revealed his heart. That revealed his heart, his motive right there. He thought he was being given the okay by God, kind of like Jacob last night, you know? Where Jacob thinks that God's, you know, submitting himself to Jacob by all the blessings that he gained, that God's performing like he commanded him to do. He thinks he's getting the okay of God to go ahead and do what it was he wanted to Now, you would think, okay, God told me, don't go. God said that these people are blessed by Him. So why in the world would I want to go and try to curse, you know, if he, like I said, if he was in his right mind? But see, he's thinking about filling his pocket. He's thinking about Balaam. Ooh, I got an opportunity here that I can go, you know, and make a quick buck for myself by cursing these people who God said, I can't curse, and He's not going to let me curse. And that's why God's anger was kindled when he went. These people said, well, God said to go ahead and go. Well, no, He's testing him. He's testing him here, saying, oh, really? You know, I already told you once, don't go. Nothing's changed. I haven't changed my mind. Go ahead, if they ask you to, go ahead and go, see what happens. He's testing him. Balaam's motive was incredibly wrong. Lord, already told Balaam these people were blessed. That's over in verse 12. "Then God said unto Balaam, Thou shalt not go with them; thou shalt not curse the people, for they are blessed." Well, why would you want to go curse people that God said that He's blessed if you're God's man? There's something wrong here with this fellow's thinking, and there's something wrong with this fellow's heart. It's all about, he's saying, well, yeah, God said, don't go, but maybe if I go, maybe I can work it out somehow here where I can still get something from me out of all this in spite of the facts. Long story short, and Balaam goes. Balaam does not succeed in cursing Israel, but ends up prophetically blessing them three times instead of the cursing as he's moved by the Holy Spirit of God to speak. And of course, every time he does that, and Balak gets upset, he goes, well, I told you, I can't do anything more than what God says. But hey, I came, I'm trying, aren't I? Let's see, where are we at here? Chapter 24. We want to move ahead a little bit, saying, we're not going to go through the whole story. Pick it up at verse 10 there, Numbers 24:10, down to about 14. "And Balak's anger was kindled against Balaam; and he smote his hands together. And Balak said unto Balaam, I call thee to curse mine enemies. Behold, thou hast altogether blessed them these three times. Therefore, now flee thou to thy place. I thought to promote thee unto great honor, but lo, the Lord hath kept thee back from honor." No, He hadn't. Kept Himself back from real honor that He would have got from God if He'd done what He was supposed to do. "And Balaam said unto Balak, Spake I not also to thy messengers, which thou sentest unto me, saying, If Balak would give me his house full of silver and gold, I cannot go beyond the commandment of the Lord, to do either good or bad of mine own mind; but what the Lord saith, that will I speak." Well, aren't you a wonderful preacher? Yeah. "And now, behold, I go unto my people. Come, therefore, and I will advertise thee what this people shall do to that people in the latter days." And he goes on and prophesies about what Israel's going to do, just to put a little whipped cream with a cherry on top of all that, to really, really get Balak mad. Balaam's rebuffed by King Balak, told that he will not be receiving a paycheck for his services, for his failed attempts to manipulate God. And I'm going to tell you, boy, this turns into a curse on the Moabites for what they've done and what they will do. Go into Deuteronomy, chapter 23. Deuteronomy 23, and we want to pick it up at verse 3. Deuteronomy 23, verse 3. "An Ammonite or a Moabite, now those are the descendants of the two children that were born by the incest of Lot with his two daughters. An Ammonite or a Moabite shall not enter into the congregation of the Lord, even to their tenth generation." I don't care if it's 10 generations from them, it's not going to purify them enough to enter into the congregation of the Lord. Neither shall they enter into the congregation of the Lord forever. If you're an Ammonite or a Moabite, you can forget it. God don't want anything to do with you. You are cursed. "Because they met you not with bread and with water in the way, when you came forth out of Egypt; and because they hired against thee Balaam, the son of Beor, of Pethor, of Mesopotamia, to curse thee. Nevertheless, the Lord thy God would not hearken unto Balaam; but the Lord thy God turned the curse into a blessing unto thee, because the Lord thy God loved thee. Thou shalt not seek their peace, nor their prosperity, all thy days forever." I said, I don't want you to have anything to do with them. I want you to wipe them out. Cost Balaam, cost Balaam his life. Go back into Numbers, chapter 31. Numbers 31, verse 8. Numbers 31, verse 8. "And they slew the kings of Midian, beside the rest of them that were slain, namely Evi, and Recum, and Zoor, and Hore, and Reba, five kings of Midian. Balaam, also the son of Beor, they slew with the sword." In fact, if you go up into Joshua, Book of Joshua, chapter 13, verse 22. Joshua 13, verse 22. Say something in my French, because I'm in Judges, a little too far ahead. Let's try Joshua 13:22. "Balaam, also the son of Beor, the soothsayer, did the children of Israel slay with the sword among them that were slain by them." Gets it in the neck, and deservedly so. But he died for more than just what he did there, a whole lot more than for what he just. Go into Revelation 2:14. Revelation, chapter 2, verse 14. "But I have a few things against thee, because thou hast there them that hold the doctrine of Balaam, who taught Balak to cast a stumbling block before the children of Israel, to eat things sacrificed unto idols, and to commit fornication." From here, go back into Numbers 31:16. Numbers 31, and verse 16. "Behold, these cause," he's talking about the Moabites, "these caused the children of Israel through the counsel of Balaam, to commit trespass against the Lord in the matter of Peor," that was their false God, "and there was a plague among the congregation of Israel." Go back, chapter 25 in Numbers, verse 1 through 3. Here's what happened. "Israel bowed and shet them; and the people began to commit whoredom with the daughters of Moab." Talking physical whoredom here, but they also are going to commit whoredom, fornication spiritually as well. "And they called the people unto the sacrifices of their gods, Peor; and the people did eat and bow down to their gods. And Israel joined himself unto Baal Peor; and the anger of the Lord was kindled against Israel." Balaam had to come up with a way to get the Lord to punish Israel so that he could collect his reward from King Balak. So he told him how to do it. He says, look, I can't get God to punish him, but I can tell you how to get God mad at him so that God will do it. Says, mix with him. You mix with him. You get him to commit physical fornication, and then you get him to come down to your sacrifices, to your worship, to come and worship your gods. God will get mad, God will punish them for that. And he got his reward, he got his money, he got his paycheck. Yep? Incredible. 2 Peter, chapter 2. 2 Peter, chapter 2, the first two verses. "But there were false prophets also among the people, even as there shall be false teachers among you, who privately shall bring in damnable heresies, even denying the Lord that bought them, and bring upon themselves swift destruction. And many shall follow their pernicious ways, by reason of whom the way of truth shall be evil spoken of." Skip down to verses 14 and 15 in that same chapter. "Having eyes full of adultery, that cannot cease from sin, beguiling unstable souls, on heart they have exercised with covetous practices, cursed children, which have forsaken the right way, and are gone astray, following the way of Balaam, the son of Beor, who loved the wages of unrighteousness." Jude, single chapter book just before the Revelation, Jude, verses 3, 4, and 11. Book of Jude, verses 3, 4, and then 11. "Beloved, when I gave all diligence to write unto you with a common salvation, it was needful for me to write unto you and exhort you, that ye should earnestly contend for the faith which was once delivered unto the saints. For there are certain men, crept in unawares, who were before of old, or deigned to this condemnation, ungodly men, turning the grace of our God into lasciviousness, and denying the only Lord God, our Lord Jesus Christ." Verse 11. "Woe unto them, for they have gone in the way of Cain, and ran greedily after the error of Balaam for reward, and perished in the game, saying, Of core." I preached the message this morning at the nursing home, and my text was over in Philippians, chapter 3. I'm going to turn there real quick and touch on that. Philippians, chapter 3, verse 2. "Beware of dogs, beware of evil workers, beware of the concision." I'm going to preach that message here somewhere in the near future, but that very last one of the three, beware of the concision. That's who these are. The concision, and I'll explain that in that future message, but that's who these are. The concision, okay? You've got a prefix, con, there, means completely, cision, to cut it, okay? Their whole idea, we're going to completely cut you away from the body of Jesus Christ or our heresy. We'll save that for another message. And there's just as many today, just as we just read here in 2 Peter and in Jude, had have been warned about, who would make merchandise of the Lord's people to line their own pockets. Man, the world is full of them, and it's incredible how many of them there are that are just like that. Go over to 1 Kings. We'll see another example. 1 Kings, chapter 13. That's Balaam, he's one example. I'm going to give you another one. 1 Kings 13. I've known a few of these. 1 Kings 13, verses 1 through 3. "And behold, there came a man of God out of Judah, by the word of the Lord, unto Bethel; and Jeroboam stood by the altar to burn incense. And he cried against the altar, in the word of the Lord, and said, O altar, altar! Thus saith the Lord, Behold, a child shall be born unto the house of David Josiah by name; and upon thee shall he offer the priests of the high places, that burnt incense upon thee; and men's bones shall be burnt upon thee. And he gave a sign the same day, saying, This is the sign which the Lord has spoken. Behold, the altar shall be rent, and the ashes that are upon it shall be poured out." This is our second example here, when we're dealing with motive of pride by a believer, okay? Here, dealing with two men of God this time. Kingdom of Israel had been split into the 10 northern tribes under Jeroboam, and you had Judah and Benjamin under Solomon's son, Robon. Jeroboam was worried that the folks in those 10 northern tribes, when the time came to go offer sacrifices and keep the feast, and that, well, they're going to go down to Jerusalem. He said, man, I got to keep from doing that, because they're just going to defect, and I'm going to lose this kingdom. So he set up a place there in Bethel to worship at, and he saw an altar that was in, what, I was thinking about the city here, with the Assyrians, and he had this altar made. And that's what, that's what this prophet's cursing this altar here, because now, he set up, what did he set up? A golden calf. You know, sounds familiar? For them to worship at. And that's why he's been sent by God from Judah to do this. Now, he's been sent by God from Judah into Israel, where the 10 northern tribes are, okay, a divided kingdom here. Well, there's not a man of God in Israel, and we'll find, excuse me, up there in the 10 northern tribes, you know? So God sends this man there to preach against the heresy and the religious system, this false system of worship that's been set up by King Jeroboam to the citizens of this kingdom that, where, that he's trying to keep these folks from defecting back when they go down to Jerusalem. Pick it up, and, well, actually, let's go backwards. So I think we want to go to chapter 12, go back a little bit. Yeah, verse, let's see, where do I want to be? Verse 26. "And Jeroboam said in his heart, Now shall the kingdom return to the house of David, that this people go up and do sacrifice, and the house of the Lord at Jerusalem; then shall the heart of this people turn again unto their Lord, even unto Robon, king of Judah. And they shall kill me, and go again to Robon, king of Judah. Whereupon the king took counsel, and made two calves of gold, and said unto them, It is too much for you to go up to Jerusalem. Behold thy gods, O Israel, which brought thee up out of the land of Egypt. And he set one in Bethel, and he put the other one in Dan." So Bethel's down in the southern part of his kingdom, Dan's up in the northern part of his kingdom. He says, hey, pick one, doesn't matter which one's closest, easiest for you to go to. But man, you don't need to go down to Jerusalem. Here you go, I got you all set up. Here be your gods. So this is what he's done. Now, the character of this young prophet that he sends is completely the opposite of Balaam. He's determined to be obedient to the Lord, as he both fears and loves the Lord his God. So we're back in 13 again, and we want to pick it up at verse 11 down to 18. "Now there dwelt an old prophet in Bethel; and his sons came and told him all the works that the man of God had done that day in Bethel. The words which he had spoken unto the king, they told also to their father. And their father said unto him, What way went he? For his sons had seen the way that the man of God went, which came from Judah. And he said unto his sons, Saddle me the ass. So they saddled him the ass, and he rode thereon, and went after the man of God, and found him sitting under an oak. And he said unto him, Art thou the man And he said unto him, 'Art thou the man of God, that camest from Judah?' And he said, 'I am.' Then he said unto him, 'Come home with me and eat bread.' And he said, 'I may not return with thee, nor go in with thee; neither will I eat bread nor drink water with thee in this place. For it was said to me by the word of the Lord, Thou shalt eat no bread, nor drink water there, nor turn again to go by the way that thou camest.'" "And he said unto him, 'I am a prophet also, as thou.'"